Mananas Zeus, good morning. This public hearing is being held by the Committee on Transportation, Tourism, Customs, Utilities, Federal and Foreign Affairs. It is now called to order. It is now 9:06. It is May 2, 2025. Before we start out, I want to wish my daughter a happy 13th birthday. She's 13 years old today, teenager today, so happy birthday, Sky. I think she's online watching. But good morning. Today, we will hear testimony on Bill Number 109-38-CRR sponsored by myself, Senator Chris Duñez, Senator V. Anthony Ada, an act to authorize the Port Authority of Guam to grant a dollar-for-dollar offset against the lease payments for tenants who invest in the tangible documented improvements to port property that provide have high value to the community or enhance port operations and to establish a streamlined process for implementation. And the second bill that will be heard is Bill Number 121-38-CRR sponsored by myself, Senator Jesse A. Lujan, Senator Chris Duñez, Senator Vicente A. Vinson, A. V. Borja, V. Anthony Ada, Shelley V. Calvo, Tina Rose Munya Barnes, Sabrina Salas Mathenani, Joe Wissin Augustine, Sean Guma Tautau, Frank F. Bloss, an act to amend Section 54B, 102 of Chapter 54B, Title 10, Guam Code Annotated, relative to allowing for further exemptions to the Choose to Reuse Munga Ma'adzik Iplastic Act of 2018, in that order. Before we start out this time, I want to welcome my colleagues, of course, my vice chair, Senator Chris Duñez, Senator Sean Guma Tautau, Senator Telo Tidigui, and Senator Shelley Calvo. With that, again, before we begin, I'd like to remind everyone in attendance of the Institute on Guam's general rules of conduct. Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by the chair before speaking and shall state their full name for the record. Questions and testimony shall be confined to the substance or nature of today's agenda. Personal inferences to the character or motive of any senator or individual testifying is not permitted. Pursuant to Section 1107 of the 38th Guam Legislative Standing Rules, a chairperson may order the removal from a hearing of a committee or a subcommittee of any person who is not a member of the Institute on Guam who fails to observe property quorum. Any violation of this general rule of conduct will result in immediate removal from this public hearing room. With that, we will now proceed to hear testimony on Bill 109, as the author I will give my opening statement as well. But before I do that, let me just go ahead and call the panel that will be testifying because we have some oral testimonies or support. But the folks that sign up to testify are Leonard Kai, if you want, go ahead and step up, yeah? Mark Mamzah, Will Calvo, Mark, yeah, come on, yeah, and Senator Rory Spisho. Okay, before we start with testimony, let me give, okay, my opening, okay. Colleagues, stakeholders, and members of the public, thank you for the opportunity again to present and discuss Bill Number 109-38 today. This bill is straightforward yet transformative. It authorizes the Port Authority of Guam to offer a dollar-for-dollar offset against lease payments for tenants who invest in tangible documented improvements that either enhance port operations or provide meaningful value to our border community, broader community. At its core, this measure is about incentivizing private investment to strengthen one of our island's most critical assets, our port. Holding this public hearing is vital because it gives us a chance to deliberate openly, gather feedback, and ensure that the final implementation of this policy is both responsible and effective. The port is a gateway to our island's economy, and as chairman of both our ports and tourism, I understand that every initiative we undertake to modernize and optimize its operations has ripple effects across our supply chains, our businesses, and our people. If passed, this legislation will not only reduce the burden of government resources but also create a climate where tenants are encouraged to reinvest in Guam's infrastructure. This is about partnership. It's about ensuring that progress at the port is not delayed by bureaucracy but instead fueled by collaboration. With that, we'll now proceed to hear testimony. If you don't mind, I know that Senator Spisho has to get to another engagement here in about 45 minutes, so we can start off with Senator Spisho, Port General Manager.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have to be at quarter 10 a.m., but I'll stay as long as I can.
Can you get closer to the...
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of your committee and other honorable senators. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony and strong support of Bill Number 109-38. My name is Rory J. Spisho, General Manager of the Port Authority of Guam. And for the record, Dominic Munya and Pacifico Martir, Deputy General Manager of the port, are also here and there would remain throughout the duration of this hearing for any additional questions or concerns you may have. And we are submitting this testimony in our official capacity. We are also pleased to submit Port Authority of Guam Board Resolution 2025-17 titled relative to stating the board's support of Bill Number 109-38 into the legislative record. The bill includes necessary safeguards to ensure proper implementation. Improvements must be tangible and documented. They must provide high value to the community or enhance port operations. All offsets must be verified before being granted. Establishes a streamlined process for fair and consistent application. Documentation and accountability are required at every step, and the financial reporting still recognizes the revenue and the improvements are booked as capital assets. Verification under this framework will require tenants to submit supporting documentation such as permits, invoices, photos, and completion reports. These materials will be reviewed by the port to confirm that the improvements are complete, documented, and meet this bill's criteria before any offset is applied. This ensures transparency, accountability, and proper alignment with financial controls. To be clear, not all tenant activity will qualify under this bill. Routine maintenance, such as landscaping or repainting an office interior, would not meet the threshold for a lease offset. Likewise, improvements made solely within tenant lease spaces that do not provide broader operational or community benefit will not qualify. Only capital improvements that provide measurable value to port operations or the public beyond the direct use of the tenant will be allowable should this bill be passed by letter to Guam and signed into law by our Maga Haga. Bill Number 109-38 enables the port to offer a dollar-for-dollar lease offset to tenants who invest in qualified improvements on port property. It does not alter the port's lease rates established by statute. The offset would apply only after improvements are completed and verified by the port to ensure they meet the criteria and provide genuine operation or community benefit. It is also important to clarify that this offset program is intended to be very limited and tightly controlled. The port still relies on lease payments as a core source of revenue, and this policy does not alter that. Any offset granted under this bill will represent a finite and calculated adjustment. This should not be interpreted as a broad giveaway or windfall. This bill will continue to uphold fiscal discipline and ensure that any offset granted is justified and properly documented. Each offset will be based on documented improvements that meet strict criteria and will be evaluated for both value and impact. This policy tool comes at a critical time. The port continues to make steady progress in modernizing infrastructure while managing finite resources. By incentivizing tenant-led improvements that support port operations or serve the broader community, we can stretch limited capital, advance key projects, and reduce our dependency on funding that is generated by the port's tariffs. This legislation also promotes a culture of shared responsibility. Tenants who rent from the port property are given a pathway to contribute to its long-term functionality and sustainability. In return, our island government provides a fair and verifiable offset that reinforces accountability and ensures every investment serves a public or operational purpose. Our board of directors unanimously adopted Resolution 2025-17 in support of this bill. Qualifying improvements such as paving cargo lay-down areas, upgrading security, or improving road access to areas like Family Beach are consistent with our master plan, Look Ahead 2025, and capital improvement priorities. These types of investments also support our port readiness posture and reinforce Guam's strategic importance in the region, especially since leasing H-Warf and the Old Hawaiian Rock are areas directly tied to the Glass Break Water Repair Project. We view this bill as an example of good governance that is aligned with the broader goals of government efficiency, infrastructure resiliency, and economic development. It provides a practical way to activate underutilized potential within our lease portfolio and bring immediate improvements to all port properties. Bill Number 109-38 is a practical and forward-thinking solution that makes port-controlled property work harder for all of the people of Guam. We thank our oversight chair and bill sponsor, Senator Jesse A. Lujan, and co-sponsors, Senators Chris Duñez and Tony Ada, for introducing this bill. We also thank Governor Lulian Guerrero and Lieutenant Governor Josh Tenorio for their strong leadership and support for the port and for embracing this approach to finding workable win-win solutions. Finally, we thank our board of directors for supporting its advancement through public discourse and collaboration. We trust this bill will receive unanimous support because it is practical, it meets the needs of our port community, and it is the right thing to do in light of the port's mission and our continued commitment to keeping the port strong while preserving and protecting the public benefit. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Senator Spisho, we're not asking questions yet, but in case we don't have time to get back to you before you have to leave, we received the port resolution, but can you provide us the resolution with their signatures? Because the resolutions we got were without their signatures.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I have it here.
You have it, okay. We'll get a copy of it, okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Leonard? Yeah.
Half a day and good morning, Senator Lujan, Senator Duñez, Senator Ada, and members of the 38th Guam Legislature. Thank you for your time today and for allowing me to provide my testimony in support of Bill 109-38, an act to authorize the Port Authority of Guam to grant a dollar-for-dollar offset against lease payments for tenants who invest in tangible documented improvements to the port property that provide high value to the community or enhance port operations and to establish a streamlined process for implementation. My name is Leonard Kai, resident of Tumuning, Guam, and president of Black Construction Corporation. I would like to begin with a brief introduction to Black Construction Corporation, Black on Guam. This year, Black will celebrate 68 years of construction excellence on Guam and the region. We pride ourselves in our commitment to the communities we serve. Over the years, Black has gained a reputation for reliability, estimating excellence, and superior quality of each finished project, accurate scheduling, engineering, and a wealth of knowledge and construction expertise. One of Black's historical strengths has been our understanding and ability to overcome logistical challenges in remote and resource-constrained environments. Aside from designing and constructing projects on Camp Blas, Anderson Air Force Base, Naval Station, over the last five years, Black has also successfully completed GWA's Northern District Wastewater Treatment Plant, GIAA's Terminal Building Structural Upgrade and Concourse Isolation Construction, and widening of Route 3 roadway, and many others that provide high-quality assets to the government of Guam and further provide increased capacity and service to the people of Guam. Suffice to say that Black has been and will continue to be a contributing part of this community for the long term. As you know, late last year, Black's parent company, Tudor Perini, by joint venture with Non Inc., was awarded the Opera Harbor Waterfront Repairs Project by NAFAC Marianus. A portion of this scope of work is to reconstruct the Glass Breakwater, which was originally built in 1945. As the main subcontractor and construction arm of Tudor Perini Non JV, Black will self-perform much of the work with the bulk of construction on or around the Port Authority of Guam. From rigorous design through the implementation of construction work, the upgrades are extremely crucial to the infrastructure of the Glass Breakwater, which immediately protects the continued commercial use of the port and ultimately provides the lifeline to the greater Guam community for importation of commodities. This bill represents a forward-thinking approach to enhancing the infrastructure and operational efficiency of the commercial Port Authority of Guam facilities while fostering a collaborative relationship between the port and its tenants. The language of the bill encourages investment into the port's infrastructure, financial flexibility for its tenants, strengthens public-private partnerships, and provides long-term economic benefits to the port and the greater Guam community. Encourages investment in infrastructure by allowing tenants to offset lease payments with capital improvement investments, we recognize them to contribute directly to the enhancement of port facilities. This will lead to improved infrastructure, increase operational efficiency, and less financial burden on the port for capital improvement projects. Financial flexibility for tenants, this bill provides tenants with greater financial flexibility, enabling them to allocate resources towards necessary improvements to the lease premises without the immediate burden of lease payments. Strengthening public-private partnerships, the proposed legislation fosters a collaborative environment between the Port Authority and its tenants. By working together on capital improvements, both parties can ensure that investments are aligned with strategic goals of the port and broader economic development of Guam. Long-term economic benefits. Enhanced port facilities will attract more business, increase cargo throughput, and ultimately contribute to the economic growth of Guam. The bill supports sustainable development by ensuring that improvements are made with a long-term perspective. Bill 109-38 is a crucial step forward, modernizing our port infrastructure and promoting economic growth. I implore you, the members of the Guam Legislature, to support this bill and provide the port with a pathway to be more efficient, competitive, and collaborative port environment. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Kai. Before we move on to the next presenting testimony, I'd like to welcome the vice speaker, Vice Speaker Tony Ada. Thank you for being here. Thank you. Okay. Mark?
Thank you. My name is Mark Mamzah. I'm a vice president and CFO of Black Construction since 1987. I've appeared before you guys this body for 30-plus years now periodically, so I am accustomed to this. And half a day, Senator Lujan, Senator Duñez, and Senator Ada, and members of the 38th Guam Legislature. Every bill presented to this legislature has a birthplace. Yesterday's article in the Pacific Daily News clearly outlined the elephant in the room. The square foot rate in the proposed lease is 10 times higher than a recent appraisal obtained by Black Construction Corporation. The rate is based on Public Law 3019, created and enacted in 2009. The bill established the original rate. I went back through the committee report for Bill 78, Public Law 3019, to determine the source of the rate. We always tried to figure out where this come from. The source was an independent appraisal by captain and associate, so one seems legitimate. The rate is for open yard, which has no definition. During the public hearing, the appraiser noted that the smaller the size, the higher the rate charged per square foot. Finally, in a public hearing, Glenn Nelson, a port representative, said that rates actually apply to those areas within the greater port compound to include under the eaves and sorts of that nature. The open space on the outside are not factored into the equation. I'm missing something here. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm a little bit out of order. In both the appraisal and the public testimony, the consultant, captain and association, emphasized that the 46 cents per square foot, at that time it's gone up, was based on a 60-foot square foot area or basically a container. Or, and if you went into this one, it was a heavy telecommunications bill, the area required for telecommunications pole. So, we're not sure where and exactly what the 46 cents was compared to in order to create it. Unfortunately, that's not quite in the public record, but these things indicate that it perhaps has a different meaning. The Navy is, unfortunately, to term open space is not, and the Navy has designated this project we're working on as an emergency. Black is in favor of this legislation as it expedites the process, and this is the process between Black and the port. The program will require over 10,000 boulders between 3 and 30 tons to be reset. In addition, 6,571 concrete armor units, each 42 tons heavier than anything on the breakwater today, are to be placed on top of the rearranged boulders. Upon completion, the breakwater will be significantly fortified for the benefit of both the Navy and, more importantly, the Port of Guam. Under Public Law 3410, Black led the Harmon Industrial Park Association in a private, public-private partnership for the upgrading of roads in Harmon. This was a successful program in upgrading these roads. Another positive approach is that the revenue stream is created by the lease. In other words, we don't have to look for a revenue stream here. I think that that's an important piece of this. Based on Black's long history of working with the government of Guam, Black concurs that the government initiated, we did not have input on this bill, the government-initiated program to be workable. Thank you for your consideration and time.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark. Will?
Half a day. Senator Chairman Lujan, Vice Chair Duñez, Vice Speaker Ada, Senator Guma Tautau, Senator Calvo, and Senator Tidigui, thank you so much for this chance to be here before you today presenting testimony and support of Bill 109-38, an act to authorize the Port Authority of Guam to grant dollar-for-dollar offset against lease payments for tenants. You've heard the rest of it, so. I am Will Calori. I'm the president and chief financial officer of Cabras Marine Corporation. Cabras Marine Corporation currently holds a leasehold interest in the Pacific Dry Dock and Integrated Maintenance Facility. Some of you may have been down to our property. We are located at the F2 Pier in the Port Authority of Guam. I am providing testimony in support of Bill 109-38. Cabras Marine was established in Guam in 1975, marking 50 years of maritime operations this year. Over the last half-century, CMC has provided its commitment to reliable, innovative, and high-quality maritime services. Our company continues to expand and enhance our capacity to maintain uninterrupted ship assistance and related maritime services such as water taxis, ocean cargo pollution response, and maritime ship repair services. CMC is also a tenant at the Port Authority of Guam, and we currently occupy and operate the Pacific Dry Dock Integrated Maintenance Facility. In this position, CMC is keenly aware of the challenges and opportunities that exist in developing and maintaining the waterfront facilities at the Port Authority of Guam. CMC strongly believes that Bill 109-38 will enhance the infrastructure and operational efficiency of the Port Authority of Guam. It will facilitate progress and improvements of the facilities and operations through the various public-private partnerships. And of note, Bill 109-38 includes identifying goals that are mutually beneficial for the government, for the people of Guam, and for the private partners that can further align public and private sector stakeholder interests. They offer tenants financial flexibility for investments in infrastructure without imposing immediate lease payment obligations for capital improvements. This is a common structure in any major development where we allow either some sort of credit or deferment of payments while operations commence. So it's a very common practice longstanding in the industry. And it establishes long-term economic benefits for the people of Guam through facility improvements, which will enhance cargo throughput and promote sustainable economic development. The port is the lifeblood of our economy, and the condition of the current breakwater is very deteriorated, and anything that jeopardizes the flow of cargo, the accessibility of the port, the navigability of the Opera Harbor would severely impact our economy. It would have immediate impacts on the lives of our people. So it's imperative that the breakwater is improved as soon as possible. This is an important measure that will kick-start that process and really protect our economy and the futures of our people in the long term. So we believe that Bill 109-38 is an excellent strategy to modernize the Port Authority of Guam infrastructure. It'll stimulate and protect economic growth in Guam, and CMC strongly encourages the senators of the 38th Guam Legislature to pass Bill 109-38. Zeus Masi, thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you. Now, under questioning, we start off with Senator Guma Tautau.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to Senator Roy for being with us today. Mark, thanks for representing Black. And Will, nice seeing you again, and thanks for being with us this morning. I only have a few questions. I just want to start with this. So BBMR provided their fiscal note on the bill, and they referenced the 2023 PAG-related audit that was issued by the Office of Public Accountability back in August of 2024. And in it, according to BBMR, as the lesser, the Port Authority of Guam recognized lease receivables of $37.9 million and a deferred inflow of resources from leases of $37.4 million as of fiscal year 2023. So let me just continue. In the audit, it provided the following summary, and I'll just go ahead and read it regarding leases. Governmental Accounting Standards Board, or GASP 87, lease liability. Port leases its land, infrastructure, and building space to private companies to further develop the maritime industries in Guam. With the adoption of GASP 87, the port continues to recognize on the balance sheet the present value of these payments expected to be received for the remainder of the lease term. As the lesser, port recognized lease receivables of $37.9 million and a deferred inflow of resources from leases of $37.4 million. of resources from leases of $37.4 million as of FY 2023. Port counted a total of 46 lease agreements with 40 companies at the start of FY 2023. However, only 13 of those leases with eight companies continue to be applicable and measurable under GASP 87. So recognizing that the port's master plan from 2023 includes a really long list of capital improvement projects, which was estimated in 2023 to collectively cost $191 million with only five of the 24 projects: the Gulf Pier replacement, the Enterprise One Financial Management System, the waterline replacement, well, yes, the rehabilitation of Hotel Wharf and Access Road, and WH1 Building Repair and Upgrade that's tied or potentially tied to bond funding. What information is available regarding the port's intent to rely on bond funding for projects which remain incomplete as of 2025?
Thank you, Senator, for that question. With respect to the current tenant situation at the port, over the years, we've seen some tenants move out of Cabras Island. We saw Mattson build their own building across Adlub. Our partner here, CapTAC, they've also marinated steamship. They moved out of the main building. But as they moved out, that created more capacity for the port. That also created more capacity to move customers, for example, into the Horizon Building. So as they, as our tenants move out, it doesn't mean it's a problem for us at the port because we can have more opportunity to expand. We, in Warehouse One, where you had the robust tuna fishing industry, you no longer have that. We've been able to move our equipment maintenance division over there. You've asked, what are we looking at for funding for bond-funded capital improvement projects? We're working with, Governor Ask Gita to have a bond finance team look at what kind of bond borrowing capacity we have, and we would be, we're working with the chairman here. Probably sometime in June, we're going to be coming down for some authorization to see what kind of bond borrowing capacity we have. But in terms of this project, that construction, for example, they're going to need to pave the road from 76 all the way down to Family Beach so that their heavy equipment won't be damaged as they access that area all the way down to Glass Breakwater. So that access road from Hotel Wharf all the way down to Family Beach, that was one of the projects that we've identified in our master plan. You would be able to checkmark that. The security fencing and lighting and the repaving of Hotel Wharf, they're going to be able to do that because they're using Hotel Wharf. You'd be able to checkmark that as well. So this is why we're saying that the projects that they're going to be doing to support their work for Glass Breakwater project, they're in line with our master plan projects.
Okay, and I guess it gets me to my next question. So how exactly does the port plan to meet any debt service requirements as lease revenue is, could be impacted by the provisions of Bill 109-38?
So the good thing about this is this $10.5 million lease agreement that we signed yesterday, 100% of this is revenue. The expense that we're going to be able to capture, it's zero because we're not putting any expense out. But in 100% of this is capitalized cost. So this would help our debt service ratio, and it'll also help our net income.
Okay. Thanks, Roy. Because the Port Authority's Board of Directors is recognized only in two areas of the bill, the first is on Page Two, Line 8 to 10, where an offset shall not exceed the total lease obligation unless specifically approved by the Board of Directors. And the second area, which is found on, I think it's, yeah, on three lines, 19 and 20, where, Page Three, Line 19 and 20, where the Port Authority of Guam is required to provide a summary report to the board in the Guam Legislature. What exactly is the role of the Board of Directors with respect to reviewing and approving the lease offsets?
I'll leave that to the legislature to decide what the policy ought to be. Whatever the bill looks like, we'll comply.
Okay, all right. I only have, Mr. Chair, I only have two more questions. With respect to the bill allowing the port to offset lease payments for tenants that paid for documented capital improvement projects, which were completed in the last five years, under what legal authority did the port tenants pay for these projects when they were not bound by their lease agreements to undertake? And was there any expectation by these tenants that the port would reimburse them for their investments at some point in the future?
The only provision that this would particularly recognize is the lease that we signed yesterday.
Okay.
And this lease that we signed yesterday recognizes that if the legislature, there's any changes in statute, that that lease would recognize those changes in statute.
All right. Thanks, Senator. And then my last question, Mr. Chair, is using a, I think it's a really good example, in Public Law 33-191 that was enacted back in December of 2016, which authorized certain business privileged tax credits and use excise tax credits for the rehabilitation and improvement of the Harmon Industrial Park roadway, which I know that Black Construction was probably part of that group. How is the tax credit model in Public Law 33-191 a helpful or unhelpful alternative to the proposed lease offset model that's proposed in Bill 109-38?
So this is not a tax credit model at all. In a tax credit model, the legislature has a revenue projection, and whatever that revenue projection is, then you authorize tax credits. When you give tax credits, it's taken off the top of whatever the revenue comes in. In this case, we didn't project $10.5 million. This lease that we signed yesterday, this is not part of the port's revenue at all. And so we don't, we don't, we account for it. We book it as revenue. But this is money that we're not immediately relying on. So this, unlike tax credits, they're automatically booked against the revenue that's coming to the government. And I know the chairman of appropriations is nodding because it's a burden on the legislature and also the administration, the governor and DOA, in how to pay the bills because the holder of these tax credits, they go and they redeem it, and that's as good as cash. In this case, whoever has a lease, these arrangements would have to be prearranged by the port, authorized by the port, and then the offsets are done after the work is completed and verified and documented.
And thank you for that. I think that this is the type of, yeah, Mark, go ahead.
Yes, I was quite actively involved in that process. And the challenge we faced, as Roy quite appropriately noted, everybody wanted to improve it, but in the terms of the budget, they didn't want to cut back the source of funding, which was the use tax and the GRT. That one, in particular year to try and reduce the impact to the general budget, not to an independent agency, was, we actually had to have it, do it over three years. And it took, the funds came out of three separate funding years. I wish we would have had more. We probably got 75% of the place done, you know, but we took what we could get at that time. And I'm very proud of the end results. Leonard and myself spent hundreds of hours on that, administrating it and trying to, it was a challenge. We had to deal with four or five different public agencies for approvals. I really liked this one a little bit more. I'll be honest with you. I was kind of surprised that the board didn't pre-approve these things of what, and it was just going back to CIP. And I think you've.
Senator Mark, can I add? The board does pre-approve these things in the sense that they approve the overall budget. And so this is the way, this is why I'm very pleased with this structure is because we control this in terms of the financial independence that the port maintains, that this is not the legislature saying appropriate from the port budget. For example, resurfacing Hotel Wharf, appropriate from the port budget, security lighting and fencing from the port budget for the Black Construction to do the Glass Breakwater project. This, and the port, the Port Authority Board's role in this is to make those authorizations and appropriations at a board level. And we can, the port controls this through the board, and it's budgeted.
No, and I support, I mean, I completely support this. I think that this is the, these are the kinds of public-private partnerships, quite frankly, that need to be done, not just in this one sector and probably the most important sector of our island society and our port and how we get goods and services through. But we should be looking at these at other venues.
And may I add that we're only talking about a limited, finite amount of money. When we presented this to the board, our board member, Director Fay, got so excited because, you know, she thought that this is going to translate to, and your staff was watching the board meeting, and this is, this could generate potential, a lot of money, a lot of investment. But, and the other thing that we're excited about, and the way the chairman drafted this bill and his co-sponsors, is that this is not special interest legislation, and this is not limited just to Black Construction's involvement with the port. Cabras Marine is a longtime partner, and they just celebrated their 50th anniversary the other day. They can come to the port, or we can go to them and say, maybe we could do some, provide some exercise equipment along Seawall. It's going to cost X amount, maybe, I don't know, $5,000, $10,000. We have some budget. Do you think we can offset that? So this is how this process can be used for something like that.
Oh, no, exactly. And then, as I said, when we talked before in this venue and others, yes, don't forget your marinas. But anyhow, thank you.
But by the way, the board meeting, Director Conchita asked me to relay that there's a lot of work that was done in the Agon Marina. And I'm here following you.
Well, I mean, for me, I'm hoping we can, we can start focusing on those two at some point.
Yes. Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, go ahead, Mark. I'm sorry.
Yeah, just a side point. Some of these things we were doing just because we've got a long construction program, but we would have been doing some of these activities in a manner that was temporary.
Right.
So what happens with part of this process is we go and make permanent improvements to the port versus, you know, okay, I got to maintain a road because I'm running over it. You know, now we, you know, we got to go back to Public Works, get a, you know, permit, make sure it's properly designed and everything else. So that's a step further that I think that really becomes a benefit to the port. I mean, I'm not going to do just, I mean, and I don't know what we'll do with it. For example, we've already bought some fenders for Hotel Wharf. Their used fenders are not very good.
And bollards.
And bollards. But they're, they'll get us, they'll get black by. Maybe he wants a little more. You know, and that's the things we're going to sit down and go through. I mean, you know, we've got enough to manage our needs, but do we want to take it a step further?
Well, I got it, Mark. So I mean, don't think I'm against this bill. I'm actually, I think this is a great bill for the, for not just the port, but the entire community. So thank you, Mr. Chair, for the time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Gumiatauto. Senator Tallo Tadegui.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, and to my colleagues, and of course, those who are here testifying. And I think public-private partnerships are a great perspective that we all need to invest in and most especially to ensure that we provide whatever necessary means there are to assist our businesses who keep our island economy growing. It's very important that we do that. And I'm pretty sure you know that this legislature, our intention only is to cross our Ts and dot our Is and to ensure that the people's money that's instilled in us is protected, one, and that the taxes that yield to this government is also spent wisely. Excuse me. My concern, of course, is of a bunch of things with this agreement, especially with the retroactive. You know, don't quite understand how that works when an agreement was already signed with the Port Authority and a business, and the procurement, which is followed, right, Rory? You guys have a procurement process at the port? Okay, so the procurement process is followed. The agreement's in there. There's nothing in there about, you know, switching over to now, well, even if they're offered tax credits later or to allow, you know, tit-for-tat, you know, a payment. So my concern is, how do you evaluate this to give the true dollar amount, number one? Number two, you know, with BBMR, I am too concerned because port needs to maintain a certain amount of revenue into the port. And if this is going to jeopardize that revenue coming in, because unless you're, I call it tit-for-tat. I'm sorry, you know, what's the word I'm using? Anyways, you are accommodating for areas that the port would have to otherwise pay for. So instead of paving road to Family Beach or building a, building across the street, how about the Genki trains, the, those that are really needed, the equipment that's needed on the shipyard that yet to be paid for? We lost some grants at the port. And so how are you going to, one, let's start first. So these are my concerns, Rory. So I'm just giving you a heads up on the questions that I'm about to ask you. It's one, how are you going to ensure the appraisal amount is going to be fair?
This bill builds into it mechanisms where everything will be subject to public scrutiny.
What about appraisals?
Appraisals in, appraisals in terms of the land or in terms of the value of the construction?
Yeah, value for value, right? So let's say you want to have them build a road. Well, actually, the road is part of it, right? So you take the assessment, how much it would cost the government of Guam to build it, you know, go through that. You know, find somebody that's a third party to appraise these projects that you're giving value to, value to. Is there going to be an appraisal of things before you make this agreement?
Yeah, there should be. There should be some.
By a third party?
Yeah, without being overly complicated, there should be some other quote that's given to verify that the amount being submitted by the tenant is basically an industry standard amount for that kind of work being done.
Who's doing the appraisal?
It would be done by CIP Engineering. They would be the end user to determine if those amounts are averaged amounts. And also, the tenant would be submitting their own cost. And these, these amounts would be agreed to before the work is even done. This is not, so in this process, you have to envision, it's like, before the work is going to be done, everything would have to be approved. The tenant just doesn't go do the work and then say, hey, by the way, port, this is what I'm going to ask you to offset. The bill's very clear and very specific in its processes and how this is going to work.
Well, I'm looking at the bill. It doesn't have that scenario. It almost like an open book for this one on the bill, based on it. It even allows this retroactive, which is very concerning.
But I want to point out that the lease that we sign does have a provision in there that if there's any changes in statute regarding that the lease shall reflect what those changes in statute is. So I don't know if you'll call that a retroactive application or just recognize what the changes in statutes are.
Well, that's just the problem. It's not, you know, you're, we're calling it in the bill a retroactive application, you know, to existing leases. And, you know, existing leases were done through procurement.
Not necessarily. We're talking about commercial leases, not, we're not talking about goods and services, Senator.
Okay, so none of your leases right now had to go through procurement?
Correct. Correct.
None of your leases?
Correct. We're talking about commercial leases.
Okay. But still, with this retroactive application, this would be based on work on property, correct? So this, this kind of retroactive, you would be doing the same thing if you were leasing out construction work. Because some of the projects that you have here are construction work, right? That you plan on working between, I guess, Black Construction because it's obvious it's Black Construction that needs this agreement. Because even if, well, let's just say this bill doesn't pass through, and I'm going to ask Black Construction this question. If the bill does not get passed, you have a 500 million-plus contract with the military government right now to fix the Breakwater area. So you've already signed an agreement to do that. In the event that you don't get these areas in which you want to lease at, to build these, I call them big jacks, right? That would be put up on the Breakwater. That would be put up on the breakwater, where would you be doing?
We have another source that was actually less expensive than the port, direct lease, and we have a cancellation clause in the agreement. So, I mean, if this building passed, we'd probably cancel the agreement with the port and go back to other facilities we have already priced, and we were actually moving towards doing them.
And it's cheaper for you to do that?
When, without the bill, yes.
Yes, it is, okay. So then, why are you doing it, then, if it is cheaper?
With the bill, it become, it's a little bit more practical to be right there, so that has a little bit of play into it, but when we do a cost analysis, the rates with the way they are right now become prohibitive. However, because we also have to do a certain level of improvements to the port if we're going to take the lease. And so if we pull back, and we get credit for those, it now becomes feasible. This all kind of goes back to the rate, and I'm, I'm personally not sure that the rate as appraised in the bill in 2006 is appropriate, but we don't have time to sit there and fight in court or something about what the appropriate rate is, all right? We've got to get this thing built. We've got to move forward. And as it is, one of the reasons we did the lease is in terms of the timeframe, we're already getting some grading permits from the DPW. We're already working on improvements as we speak with yesterday's lease, all right? But, I mean, if this went through, or doesn't go through, we'll go back to the drawing board and decide whether we want to go back to our other alternative.
Which is cheaper, you said?
When we balance some, yeah, we think we, when we, it's closer to the net that we're talking about with the improvements he's asking.
Okay.
I mean, the, you know, we've priced both scenarios, you know, the net scenario this way, and the other way is similar, there's some, you know, logistical issues, but generally speaking, we do have an alternative.
It was discussed earlier, some of the projects, the value-to-value projects that might be given between Black Construction and the Port Authority if this legislation were to go through to authorize that. And so you're already talking to somebody with the intention, like, I heard about something on Family Beach, I was told, that was going to be repaired or fixed, and a maintenance building, or a building, that's, whether it's maintenance or it's not, that a building was going to be built. It's kind of, you know, unethical to start, you know, negotiating with someone when you haven't even, you know, for a value-to-value, to allow other people in the industry that need port land, you know, to start working with someone. Have you already made these arrangements with Black Construction, Rory?
Let me tell you the dynamic of this situation, Senator Tadegui. The public law puts the rental rate at the port at 56 cents a square foot. Black Construction got an appraisal at 5 cents a square foot, 6 cents a square foot.
I'm sorry, how much?
Their appraisal at a market value valuation is at 6 cents a square foot.
6 cents a square foot, when the law says it's 50?
The law says 56 cents a square foot.
Okay, thank you.
So our statute, which is, we run the risk of, of the possibility of saying, okay, let's just follow their appraisal and say the appraisal should be 6 cents a square foot because that's what the market value should be. But in talking to our appraiser, which our appraiser, which our appraisal's not out yet, if you do an investor value methodology, we might be able to get 56 cents a square foot, because if you look at the, if you look at the Glass Breakwater project at 517 million, and the strategic location of Hotel Wharf, our, and the value of Hotel Wharf and the Old Hawaiian Rock area, that represents 2.09% of the total project. So every time we had negotiations with Leonard Kai and Black Construction, every time he said, your rates are too high, my response to him was, fine, go somewhere else, go somewhere else, because you have to know your value. Realistically speaking, where the port, we have waterfront property, we have Hotel Wharf, when I talk to the appraiser, if he did a, if he did a market value valuation, which is what they did, obviously, our rates are 571% overvaluation, because anyone who has to come in has to resurface, they have to put 2.4 million dollars' worth of improvement in order to make that property work, just for Hotel Wharf. They have to resurface, they have to put security fencing, security lighting, they have to pave all the way down to Family Beach. And so Black Construction was even willing to pay four years in advance, that's $500,000, but the statute's very clear. I don't have the authority to, I'm saying all of this because I want you to know that you ought to be proud of how we negotiate and how we treat this land as if it's our own land, and to say that, that no, it's 56 cents a square foot, then there's a 5% overhead. But then, you asked if it's ethical to be talking about these things, sure, it's a discussion, it's negotiations. And as Mark said, in order for this to make it workable, because we had heard through the paper that they're already negotiating for ancestral lands property over there at Old Polaris Point at 5 cents a square foot, to sublease from Madsen, to sublease from Smith Bridge, and there's some environmental concerns that they had, they're going to put warehouse space, office buildings there, at the Old Hawaiian Rock area, there, Leonard Kai said that, $8 million for four years, Rory, that's a lot of money, it's cheaper if I buy it, sorry, that property is not for sale. And so what he was willing to do with this proposed legislation by our Oversight Chair, we'd asked him, well, if you reduce your footprint, maybe it'll become more affordable, and with this dollar-for-dollar offset, and I'd asked him, think about it, Mr. Kai, if you put your warehouse spaces at Polaris Point, after four years, you're going to have abandoned buildings there, you're going to have direlek buildings, who's going to take office space there? But at Old Hawaiian Rock, if you have, if you have a 10,000 square foot warehouse space, they're going to put a paved road, power water, that for the Navy engineers, then another 4,000 square foot warehouse office space, air-conditioned, for Black Construction headquarters, then you're going to have another warehouse, a concrete slab to house all their tools and equipment, they're going to leave all those things behind, they're going to, although those warehouses could be removed, they're going to leave all those things behind. Anything that cannot be easily removed, they're going to leave behind. After four years, we can move CIP Engineering into that area, we can move safety and into that area, that could be the future site of the, we talked about the recycling enterprise zone for the abandoned vehicle program. These are visionary, long-term legacy issues that we can all be very proud of, and we didn't have to put a dime in, because right now, if you go to Old Hawaiian Rock area, it's been a blight, it's been an eyesore, there's, they're, they're going to clean up the area, there's abandoned vehicles there, think about it. And, and if you go to Old Hawaiian, if you go to Hotel Wharf right now, we recent, just yesterday, we won our Supreme Court case to evict the, you know, the longstanding tenant there, we, it's very hard to, as a landlord, a government landlord, who to think we had to go all the way to Supreme Court to finally resolve that issue? And so look at, look at the Hotel Wharf condition, and you talk about losing a grant, we lost a grant that we, that was never shovel-ready, we never had to return that money, but you're talking about $100 million that was required to finish the Hotel Wharf project, it's circumstantial, was not shovel-ready. They're coming in, they're going to resurface that area, they're going to put, like I said, they're going to work with our harbor master, the Coast Guard, to see what it's going to require to make that a permitted wharf for vessel discharge operations. Who knows how much work, how much more work we need to do to make that an alternative wharf after four years? I don't know, then, then if you, if you look at the 3.8 million dollar value, the 2.4 million dollars work that they have to put in, the 1.2 million, 3.8, 2.4, 1.4 million dollars that's left in what they were not wanting to pay, because they can go somewhere else that's cheaper, then you look at more opportunities that the port is wanting to do for the community. We had dreamed about putting a bathroom and shower facility at the Family Beach. We, I talked to the governor, and she said, it makes sense if there's still some more availability for the dollar-for-dollar offsets, spoke to the chairman, if Black Construction is willing to build a bathroom and shower facility and use that as part of the tax, the dollar-for-dollar offset, Senator, why not? Why not?
Well, you know, Rory, it's about being fair, ensure that any contracts that goes out, whether it's a value-to-value or a contract, is done fairly. Will the port have a cap on providing this value-to-value? Because, and how much does the port need in revenue to continue to operate?
So that, so that would be up to us as a, as a board, that'll be up to us as a management team to determine, so we have to make sure that we don't, we don't use more than what we need in order to sustain our revenue needs. And that's why I said, there's just a finite amount of available resources that we have, but if, if we already have plans to do a bathroom facility, we built the bathroom facility at Aggett, first time ever, and you cannot mix...
What is the revenue that is, port is required to have on a yearly basis, at least a yearly basis, in order for the port to run efficiently? What is...
Well, our minimum debt service ratio requirement is 1.25%, and we're meeting all those debt service ratio requirements, the concern...
Including maintenance of the buildings that you currently have? So you're talking about 1.2? I'm just curious, the money amount, because, you know, government of Guam right now is financially strapped. You know, cash is very hard to get right now, so, just wondering how much that was, Rory, and of course, the maintenance.
Yes, and I think if you've been following, we just let out a 4.8 million dollar project for Warehouse One, we got, we got so much yard equipment from a federal grant, we had a roundtable hearing the other Friday, Senator commented that it's refreshing to get an update from a government agency, we not asked, we haven't asked a single dollar from the legislature, the only thing we're going to be asking from you is your continued trust and confidence, we're going to have to go out to the bond market, where we have a posture right now to probably be able to borrow $100 million. If we can't get this Marat grant for the 72 million dollars we need for the gantry cranes, because we're trying to, the governor's trying really hard to get DOD to, to put that in their economic adjustment process, we've been trying for three years, Senator, it's not like we've been sitting on our hands, we're, we've been trying, we've been trying.
Right, so you really need cash at this point to cover those areas, right?
But you're talking about 10 and a half million dollar lease, it's a big victory for us, right, that we have a, but you can't...
It was signed yesterday for 10 million, right? Okay, so that's cash that's going to come into the, to the port.
But that's four years, and then you subtract 2.4 million, you cannot take the balance and go buy a gantry crane, you know how...
No, you can't, but you can also, you know, yield it to whatever borrowing, because you have this revenue coming in. That, see, that's my concern, and again, you didn't answer my question.
I did.
Is, no, with regards to a cap, is the Port Authority have a certain amount that they're going to cap on this value-to-value, because the revenue is needed at the port to cover the gantry cranes, gantry...
Gantry cranes.
Gantry cranes, and also other areas in the port shipyard that needs to be, you know, we're looking at the scanners, but of course, we're looking at customs, but providing the facility to do that. There's quite a bit of projects, other than Family Beach and building a road out there.
But you're asking the port, through your other bill, and I know in your standing rules, you're not allowed to bring up other bills, but you're asking the port to pay for mandates that are not part of the port's mandates? And that's for another, that's for another conversation.
Okay, so you don't have a cap, Rory? You don't have a cap that the port is trying to maintain?
For this particular legislation, why would there be a cap? It's all...
No, I'm talking about cap for, you know, all around as far as revenue, because you guys have to meet a certain amount of revenue at the Port Authority to, you know, to address, address the other needs of the port.
Every time the board passes a budget, we have to meet our minimum debt service ratio requirement of minimum 1.25%.
But there's future costs?
Yes, our annual debt service, about $5 million a year for our 2018 revenue bond, we have to book personnel costs.
And the cranes.
CIPs, well, we haven't funded, we don't have a debt service yet for the cranes, but if we...
But you need it, right?
Well, but if we have a, if we borrow $100 million, for example, the debt service scenario for that is 12 million. We get $9 million a year from the crane surcharge. We get 6 million, $3 million from the, from the facility, $6 million from the crane surcharge, $3 million from the facility maintenance fund. So there's, there's some balance to make up, and there's other ways to do it.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah, you started not answering my question, but, you know...
Oh, I'm trying, I'm trying very hard.
I know, well, and, and I'm trying very hard to get the answer from you two as well, but...
But can I ask you?
How about maintenance? You talked about all these other areas that, that would be built from this value-to-value, there's going to be costs afterwards to maintain these buildings as well. You're probably going to rent them, maybe, you know, so that you can cover your costs there, but there's a lot of variables that, it's not just as simple as this bill, pass this bill and let you do a value-to-value, you have to take a lot of other things in perspective. And that's fairness, too, to allow other organizations or companies to also bid on this value-to-value scenario, and leave that open, because you're actually opening the gates for that, and then losing revenue coming in to the port is one of my biggest concerns. So what is the methodology that, well, other than the 56 cents, you're going to stay that course, right? 56 cents per square? You're going to stay that, you're not going to go to 6 cents, right?
Well, I hope not.
Okay, let's make sure that happens. Okay. Well, there's going to be a lot more interest in this scenario, I believe that, you know, we do have to have some type of other means of revenue, because, you know, private-public partnerships are important to help the government out, but we just don't want to see any abuse from it, or unfairness in the government. Other than that, anything else, Rory, that you want to add? Because I know you're itching to say something else.
No, I know, and I, no, thank you for the opportunity, because I just, I wanted to take away from this civil discourse to be what Mark just said. They have the option of going somewhere else, and it's not like he's holding a gun to our head or putting us over a barrel, because we should never feel that way. But we should also never walk away from an opportunity, and when I told Leonard Kai, go somewhere else, I, I'm glad he didn't call my bluff, because when you think about what the Glass Breakwater project means for our island, it's a military construction project, we never lobbied for it, military said it was necessary, but it's really a big benefit, not only for the community, but also for the region. If the Glass Breakwater's not repaired, it's not, you're not going to be able to maintain stability within the inner harbor, you're not going to have boats come in, vessels won't be able to discharge, both on the military and also the civilian side. I think we worry too much about the, and it's important, right, we get into the weeds, but you're looking at the Port Authority of Guam, an agency that, as stellar record, clean audits, we're working so hard, and the management there, as general manager, I'll take my last breath from however much time I have there, we're putting policy in place, we're working with the board, with this administration, to make sure that we never go back to however, whatever is in your mind of what it was ever like before, to make sure that we maintain clean audits, that our bond posture remains positive, we have to continue to put our best face... We have to continue to put our best face forward and, and sell the port of how, of truly what it is. It's, you have a group of dedicated people. Black Construction is saying, hey, your rates are too high, but with this bill, and I know, I get it, a dollar for dollar offset is, is not industry norm. Normally, if you're a landlord, someone makes improvements, you don't give a dollar for dollar offset, maybe 20%, 30%, but think about it. If after four years, you go and appraise those warehouses, we know what the cost of construction is. These guys are probably going to be thinking about and say, hey, don't give a dollar for dollar offset. Maybe you give me 200% because you go and appraise the property four years later, the value of those warehouses are going to be much more than what you, so we have to be careful what we ask for and, and get the good that we, we believe we're getting and careful what we ask for. And I, I think this is a good thing. I'm, I always, I'm, look behind me at every decision I make. We have a, like I said, we have a very active public auditor. We live in an age of transparency and every action we take is subject to scrutiny. And, and I'm sure whatever Black Construction submits, they're, they're going to be sure that their records are going to be to the norm. And, and you heard Mr. Kai said that they're, they're around, and when I asked him to reconsider building those warehouses at Old Hawaiian Rock and turn that place into a, a beautiful area and, and leave that place better than how we found it, I think that's the goal here. And I really ask for your support for this bill. Thank you.
Thank you Rory for that, that last part. Again, the BBMR says that, however absent relative information regarding the specifics of any current or future capital improvements or enhancement these leases provide to the port, the bureau is unable to determine the fiscal impact of this legislation at this time. So I hope we get, you know, I, I guess they tried to rush and get this out for the public hearing, but I hope you can also provide additional testimony as we deliberate this on the session floor Rory, with that last statement from BBMR. Okay, so other than that, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you Senator Taidiwi. Yeah, before we move on to, actually to my vice chair as well, one of my co-vice chairs, Senator Duñez, just like to reiterate that, actually, our co-chair is Senator Duñez and I sat down with Mr. Kai regarding this and trying to talk him into not moving to the alternative, not moving to the alternative. Because again, the only ones interested, that will be interested in the property down there to develop it, and it's just a staging area. It's not something that you're going to keep as a staging area for maybe four or five years and they will go to the port. And so if the, if Mr. Kai had, had chosen to go somewhere else, the alternatives, those, those improvements will not be made. Those improvements will not be made. So that being, that being said, it would be something that will stay with the port, will stay with the port for, forever. And at this point, the only ones interested, that may have interest to develop that property is, is, is Black Construction at this point. So again, I want to thank my, my vice chair for, for being with me that day and, and helping to, to craft this bill as well and trying to talk Mr. Kai again, rather than going somewhere else, can you, you know, this is, you know, the times that we're in, we're in great challenged times at this point. And how do we think out of the box and, and the, the community again will, will benefit? Not only will the, the, the business prosper, but there's, there's a need for the community to, for enhance a place down there. You know, likewise, it needs to, it needs to be done. And the tonnage that, that's going to be down there, and even asked him, I said, you can have divers? He says, no, that's too dangerous for divers. Everything can be done, you know, digitally and all these, these things that would be put there. And again, it's just a staging area, it's going to be yours when it's done. And it's something, it's, it's money that wouldn't have to come out of, of the, the funding for the, for the port. So that being said, Senator Duñez, and then we'll go Senator Calvo.
This is my seat, Mr. Chair, and thank you for the representatives from Black for being here on the Port Authority, of course. You know, for me, there's the old saying, trust but verify, right? And in my opinion, just in the opening testimony of Mr. Kai, and I'd just like to read this again, I'd like to begin with a brief introduction of Black Construction, Black Corporation on Guam. This year, Black will celebrate 68 years of construction excellence on Guam. I sat down and I have had other discussions, of course, as a senator, that's what you do. You, there, there are offers on the table, there are things that are fully transparent because a bill gets introduced, we discuss it, we discuss the possibilities. I believe Black has been a very, very good corporate citizen. And I believe they've always been, you know, acting in the best interest of Guam alongside of their business model. So that's one of the reasons why I wanted to listen to the discussion on this presentation. The other issue is, Senator Rispicio, while I understand the discussion on the need for revenue, this is a short-term project. It's a project for four to five years that generally is not pegged against what you go out on market for, for any kind of long-term financing or the like, because it's a kind of a one-shot deal. The other thing is, when I sit here and look at the testimony, written testimony from Joe Cruz, when I look at Cabris Marine in favor, when I look at ExxonMobil in favor, when I look at Mattson in favor, it's obvious that all of these corporations understand the value. The value that's going to be put here, and you're all reputable companies that use the port, you're port users, and I'm sure your fundamental belief is, you're not going to have any substandard construction that's going to go in to improve the port. And I'm sure you're very concerned too, that while they may have an alternate option, it may put some time factors in as well. And that breakwater is absolutely critical and vital. It's our lifeline. It's the thing that makes the Guam different from any one of our neighbors in Micronesia. We have a deep water port that makes us really the hub of Micronesia, because everybody out in Micronesia also relies on our port through chain treatment. So the vitality and the vitalness of this project is very, very clear to me. And, and so that, those are the first factors that went into my consideration. The second was, Senator Rispicio, I mean, and I think this is why your board deliberated this with excitement, is there's revenue and then there's also capital outlay. You have no capital outlay right now for these improvements, except for offsets, which means the business is putting up the revenue, the business is putting up all the improvements, the business is leaving behind the improvements. So you've got multiple layers of benefit going forward. The other thing is, we discussed the fact that the improvements are not just for port-related activities. We know, we have families, many families who continue to enjoy Family Beach. There are companies that, when our tourism is going well, that use the Port Authority Beach, I mean, Family Beach and other areas there for introduction to diving, for all kinds of different activities down there. And what do they do right now? They traverse dilapidated roads, no restroom facilities, no of the other amenities that, that are possible. And then the final factor, the factor that you're exactly right in terms of not just your infrastructure improvements, but you have hotel WARP sitting there. And I'm glad you're talking like that, Mark, because I do hope we put in, because we talked during our tourism discussion here with the partners, the airport, GVB, as well as the port, that we need to get that hotel WARP staged once again for possible cruise ships, especially some of the smaller ones that come down from Japan and the like, to have an alternate place to be able to go other than the WARPage and the Frontage with regard to all the other F peers and, and the like. So to me, I just think that this is an absolute win-win. I, I like your example of the issue of, of Hamburger Road. You know, and you're right, that, and that's the scenario that I'm reversing here is. That is a scenario where the government actually takes a hit. Because they need that amortization of the proposal, they don't have the capital outlay to put it out, you know, to, to invest. So they're, they're using the credits, but they're taking a hit because they have to adjust revenues for that. The port, yes, is foregoing revenues, but it's foregoing revenues for a project that's an infrastructure improvement going forward on a dollar-to-dollar basis. So I, I believe fundamentally that this legislation is sound. I believe that is, like I said, once again, a one-off. But I just wanted to, you know, ask you, Mark, because I think it's important for you to put this on the record for Black, that your intention absolutely is to put in the same high-quality road, high-quality facilities, and the same type of integrity that you have with every other project that you work on, should you get favorable consideration in this legislation?
Everything will be engineered. Everything will have to go through a DPW permit. The, the difference that happens here is we're willing to upgrade those improvements and it, it doesn't take a lot for us to upgrade them, to upgrade those improvements beyond what we may have done. As I said, what we need for construction is not necessarily what Rory would like, you know, or the port would like. We can get by, we've got a five-year project, we don't have to go to some of the standards that might be expected. And so in this process, we go back to the government and they say, okay, well, kind of upgrade this, do a little bit of what we want it to, we can make it permanent. And, and that's kind of what we're talking about. I can't tell you exactly right now how each piece will be, but as I say, the port will give us the concept, we'll have to go through DPW and we always go through good local designers. And so it will be, I, I, I see it as a win-win, because we will upgrade what we're doing. Okay, we don't need necessarily, maybe, and I can't, for example, it's, it's the, the, on hotel WARP, we already have bought what we need. Now, we bought them used and we'll put them in there to meet our needs. And how long they last, I can't tell you. Now Rory would like us to go a step further and put in something a little more permanent, right? You know, and, and that's the port's position. Well, if we're going to do something there, let's, let's, you know, do it, do it to something that can be a little more permanent than what, you know, we only need it for limited purposes. You know, and so our, our efforts won't necessarily match what the port wants. And I, I think that's where the real benefit comes. And, and I'll be honest with you, we're, we're more than happy to upgrade some of these things, to make them better with this partnership. You know, we, we have no problem, we've done it before, we'll do it again. I mean, you've watched Black, all of you, through the years, you know, we do what we do properly and we always have. And Len and me are both very proud of that.
And, and that's the thing then, Mark, I mean, what you're saying is, you're, it's going to be clear that on infrastructure-wise, on the roads, on, on all that others, that's, that's all to code and, and, and going to be done right and well, there's opportunities for expansion and upgrades to, to other, you know, other amenities that, that could be made more permanent. But still, while you're there, if the port decides that they go in and say, hey, you know, we can, we can eke out a little bit of revenue for this, then they could get the benefit of you being there and having the installation done.
Well, as I say, they also potentially get the bene, there, there is a difference between temporary construction for a construction progress and things that require the level of quality for DPW. Right now, we were budgeted for temporary construction. That was what was in our head. It looks like if this goes through, Rory's going to ask us to do a little bit nicer and make it a little bit more permanent and protect the port and, and do it. And we're comfortable with that. That's, we're very comfortable with that. I mean, I think they're talking, what, two and a half million dollars worth of construction?
Mr. Chair, I think a better way to answer this question is, we would do whatever is permissible by DPW and whatever our budget will provide.
Sure. Yeah, and, but I mean, for us, we do $25 million a month here on Guam in construction. Two and a half, three million, we almost can close our eyes. I hate to say it, I mean, it's, you know, it doesn't barely impact us in terms of our ability to do it. You know, our, our ability to do it is, you know, very, we have the depth-
I guess, Mark, where I'm going out close with this, the bottom line is, is without an opportunity that presents itself like this, nothing happens until the, until the port goes out and, and puts out a, a bid for a project to do what you're going to do. And if there's enhancements and opportunities here, it can happen both ways.
I, I, I think the important thing, to go back in some of this discussion, both Rory and some of the senators recognized we were ready to walk, which meant zero revenue, which meant-
Zero debt.
No, no improvements. So-
No leftover collateral buildings, nothing.
Yeah, no collaborab, buildings, and, and we have alternatives. You know, we've come to the conclusion in this form, this one makes sense. You know, we, we can live with it. In terms of retro and lease, we had a debate internally on our side as to whether we should have signed the lease yesterday or wait for this legislation. You know, and, and what he tried to do is to make sure, help us to get the progress, project moving. Help us to get that, you know, we've got a timeframe here. The quicker we do it, the less likely we're going to be exposed. And so Rory, you know, we kind of compromised and said, we're going to go ahead and sign the lease so we can start to move forward, so we can get this project on time. All right? And it was, you know, we sat there and do we wait or don't we wait? You know, because the legislation is important to us, you know, hands down. And we decided to move forward in good faith, as we really need, need to get this project moving. The, the, right now, we are doing some temporary repairs. It's a change order from the federal government, all right? Because there's parts of that breakwater that could get breached in the next storm. And so we've gone in and as we speak, we're doing temporary repairs in about four or five spots. Now, later on in those four or five spots, we got to take all the temporary repairs out again and put the permanent solution in. But the critical nature of this job, I, I, I don't think people appreciate the criticalness of this job. I mean, when, when, as I say, we're in there right now and we had like three-week notice, go in there, fix these four or five little areas, because it is not going to take a whole lot for them to fail. And now all of a sudden, we got the waves coming straight through. And I think if you would ask, will, in Moar, there were a few assets that fell down into the ocean, in, in the inner harbor. In other words, the breakwater didn't protect everything, right? You know, so, you know, it's, the, the project as a whole and what we're trying to do is, I think, important to Guam. And I, I think we're very lucky, the military's kicking in the amount that's kicking in. You know, to be honest with you, inner harbor still remains safe in most storms, right? You know, and, you know, so the Navy can go hide in the inner harbor if they really want to. You know, organizations like Will can't.
Yeah, Mark, I, I think, I think you made it clear and I think it's clear to me, I'm just going to close with this, Mr. Chairman. To me, the Navy knows it's critical, because they went out and made sure that they got the money for it immediately. The second is, is that it's obvious that while you can go elsewhere, it's advantageous for the port and for the, the mobilization and the portability of everything that's going on right now and the collateral benefit, to me, is clear. Three, I always, I'm a straight shooter, I call it like I see it. The bottom line is, I'm going to vote for this bill because to me, it's practical, it's timely, and I don't want to be a penny wise and a pound foolish. The bottom line is, we have an offer on the table right here with a reputable company that is going to go in there and put significant infrastructure improvements and more than likely expedite the process to make sure that our port remains- and more than likely expedite the process to make sure that our port remains a steady lifeline to the island, as well as our national defense. Mr. Chairman, to me, this is a no-brainer. I don't see, I don't see a loss of revenue to the port because the port's not necessarily negotiating at a point of advantage for a one-off. If we were talking about a 25, 30-year, 40, 50-year lease, it'd be a whole different ballgame. But we're talking about the fact that we're going in on an emergency basis, pretty much, to shore up that very, very critical breakwater and the collateral benefit is leftover buildings on a very, very highly improved road, helping other industries collaterally, and the possibility of even increasing the final work or a longer-term work on Hotel Wharf. Those, to me, are all wins, and for that reason, Mr. Chair, I'm supporting this bill.
Thank you, Mr. Co-Chair, Senator Duñez. My next co-chair, of course, Senator Shelley Calvo, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Half a day in Buenos, everyone. You know, the intent of this bill truly has merit, and we need this. And I understand that this benefits the agency to improve its operation efficiency. And, you know, things like that takes us to a progressive state. I do understand that we need this, our community needs this. Can you imagine all our commodities? We live in an island, all our commodities come through the port, you know. Even within the defense system, we need that breakwater. So, you know, just recently, about two weeks ago, I was able to, I was fortunate to have the opportunity to spend the night at USS Nimitz prior to its decommissioning. And I was with 10 other individuals, which includes some employees from the port. And one of these gentlemen is right here, Mr. Munia, Mr. Dominic Munia. It's interesting because we actually sailed through. And so I was looking at that glass breakwater for a long time. And it just so happened that Mr. Munia was right next to me, and I started a conversation with him with regards to that. And that's when I found out that it's truly imperative that we repair that. We don't think that there's, you know, we get caught with our day-to-day life, all of us, right? And we don't really realize the gravity of many things that's happening in our island. This breakwater needs to be fixed. So, aside from that, I just wanna point that out, because for me, that's a necessity. It's a safety issue, so we need to attend to that. Some of my colleagues raised the integrity of Black Construction, and I for one, agree to that. I know many people from Black Construction, especially Mr. Kai, and they've been serving our island for a long time. And for me, when you say offset after improvement, I like that. I like the notion of it because it's really not a bad idea, if you think about it, because the risk actually is transferred to investing party, you know. So I look at it at the point where we're in the government, we're continuously concerned about budgeting and all that. So I like when the risk is transferred to another party, right? So these are the beauty of this bill that I see in this agreement, the, these are the things. I really don't have a lot of questions, it's really not concerns, but I just wanted to get clarification on just a few matters. One is, I'm just curious to know, what is the estimated impact on lease revenue? I understand that you have Director Senator Rispio already offered some clarifications in things, but I know that probably in the future, that can be compensated in some way, correct?
I think Senator Calvo, the appropriations chair summed it up best. This is really a one-time, short-term revenue for the port. For the next four years, the port's gonna receive 10 and a half million dollars in revenue, but you already have to subtract the amount of improvement that Black is gonna make in order to support the glass breakwater project. So this is, all things being relative, this is revenue that the port didn't even calculate at this time. And if you think about the money that we need to find, or struggling to find, to improve the area from the 70th entrance to like the 76th gas station, all the way down to Family Beach. We've been trying for the last five years to find a way to pave that road all the way down to Family Beach. We've been trying to find the resources to put a bathroom and shower facility. Our CIP Engineering Division already has the plans, they've been working with the permitting process. There's no power down there, there's water down there, so they're gonna use solar panels and, so if you, you know, and then we're also struggling to look at, when we look at the fill piers and Area A and how if we have someone to rehabilitate those areas, the office that the CIP Engineering is in right now, and they're really cramped up. They need a future home, in the next couple of years, where are they gonna go? So you look at this proposal, if they're gonna, if Black Construction's able to do this, and they build these warehouse spaces at Oahu and Rock area, this is, these divisions, including safety, can move to that area. These are buildings that the port does not need to put capital and spend millions of dollars. So while you're looking at what kind of rental income we're gonna lose by deferring this money, what kind of money are we gonna have to spend to build these buildings? So this is the way I look at it, is...
There is a long-term gain, you know, that we just have to wait on as we build all these things that... Are these things already, these are already agreements that are in place that will take place?
And like in any budget forecast, you would not approve any of these offsets if you really need to rely on this rental income to make payroll, to do, you know, to make your day-to-day expenses. And that's where management comes in, and that's where the board comes in to pass a budget that we need to operate day-to-day and month-to-month, yeah.
Thank you. The other thing is just pretty much the valuation models. You know, if we do, if we did put like a valuation of any tenant-funded improvement, if there's nothing in place, probably it's something that we can work on later on, right? And along with that valuation model, perhaps we can identify how we can enforce like penalties or disqualifications in cases of, you know, partnership non-compliance. So, pretty much for me, that's not a question. It's pretty much more like a suggestion that we can actually look into later on down the line. On that note, I would like to thank all of you for your testimonies and for everybody that's here and to all my colleagues. Thank you so much, it was massive, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, thank you very much, Co-Chair, Calvo, Senator Calvo. Vice Speaker Tony Etta, you're back, okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Senator Rispio, and to the gentleman who also testified. I think this bill is a win-win situation, most importantly for the people of Guam. You'll be able to ensure that the breakwater compares, repairs and reconstruction of it is gonna be beneficial, very beneficial to the people of Guam. Most importantly, all those that dock at the port. I appreciate how everyone has come down to, coming to a resolution and giving the tools, not only to tenants, but most especially to the port. And I think the port is gonna be able to look forward to projects that may be able to complete or, you know, with this offset. And I think this is just another working tool for you, right, Senator? This is just another working tool, and you'll be able to give you that flexibility?
Yes, that's correct, thank you.
Yeah, and that's what we're all about, right? Is that what we wanna do is make sure these public-private partnerships are beneficial to the tenants, but most especially beneficial to the government and to the people of Guam. And I think this is one of those tools that I foresee in different, perhaps maybe different agencies, that people will be coming forward now and saying, can we have that type of flexibility as well? Because, you know, we, you know, it's like some folks, right? They're cash-strapped but land-rich, right? And this gives them that, you know, in the private sector, it gives people opportunity to say, hey, I want this bill, but if you build or, you know, clear my property, and then I'll let you utilize my property for the next couple of years, and, you know, whatever you keep then becomes mine eventually. And it's just like the lease-back schools, how we worked that with the Department of Education. We got five, about four facilities that have been built, financed and maintained by the private sector, and then turn around, and next year, it comes right back to government of Guam. So is it a win-win situation? Definitely, you know, different models of private partner, private-public partnerships work. And I think this is one of those models that's gonna be very beneficial to the port. So thank you for coming down and testifying and also working and ensuring that it's gonna be very beneficial to the people of Guam. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Vice Speaker, thank you, thank you. I just got a couple of questions, but I wanna again thank Mr. Kai again for reconsidering, you know, the decision to go somewhere else, you know. And I think, again, this legislation passed would go a long ways again in how we do things, especially during these challenging times. I wanna thank the airport, or I'm sorry, the Port Authority as well for their foresight in this and working closely with the, with Black Construction, the tenants down there. Let me ask you this, how does the Port Authority currently evaluate tenant investments in the property down there? And how would this bill change or improve that process?
Basically, it's the tenants just improve their own areas. So the bill that you introduced is really a game changer.
Yeah.
And in my testimony, we use the example that this bill would not be used to improve the tenants' area. And that's where you draw the fine line. So we have jet ski operators that are renting open space, and they're responsible for their own space. We wouldn't use a one-to-one offset to improve their own areas because the patrons for those properties are their customers.
Sure.
So this doesn't make sense to use this for that purpose, so, but we, so it's basically that...
Sure.
Yeah.
So, again, you know, again, this is new legislation, and we haven't gone down that road before, but you think, again, this will incentivize your tenants down there?
Yeah, and then I, in response to Senator Tydegris' question about retroactive application, I think, Mr. Chairman, this legislation is finding a way to make existing tenants qualify for this program.
Yeah.
And if you can think of a better way, like Carver's Marine, for example, how do you loop them in? Because like example, they may see a community need, and they're an existing tenant. They may come to us and say, hey, we wanna identify a program that's gonna benefit the community, that's gonna benefit the community recreationally, and...
Sure.
Yeah, so, and the retroactive application is not to bring in projects that are already done, it's just to qualify existing tenants.
Sure, you know, let me just mention it as well, right? We have oversight, and most, actually everyone that's here, we're authors of the airport bill in regards to the 50-year lease. And the good news, again, to my colleagues, is that just yesterday, I received information, of course, from the Airport Authority, that because of the bill that we introduced that we'll be hearing in this next session, Boeing is very interested in doing some business at the airport. Likewise, a company that manufactures all this airport ground transportation stuff, you know, that services the planes and all that, they're looking, they're really interested in property at the airport to assemble those equipment here in Guam, and because they wanna service all of Asia through Guam. So I mean, gave me goosebumps when I read, because, you know, these are things, we're challenging times. But these are legislations, again, that would move us forward, that produce higher-paying jobs, and then, you know, this legislation as well, in times like this.
I know, we asked the port to be included. I know, next time.
You're next, I just thought...
So instead, we have to do this.
Yeah.
But we're working on it.
Yeah, no, no, and, no, believe me, I, we wanna go there as well, you know, but we wanna make sure that...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You know, all eyes are on the airport, and they gotta do it right, you know. The other day, actually had the opportunity to, to visit and tour the USS Michael Monsour, the guided missile destroyer, Navy destroyer. And we talked a little bit about, and the captain was well-versed, of course, on what's happening with the glass breakwater. And as Mark had mentioned, you know, those warships can traverse dangerous areas and stuff. I think they'll be able to traverse that, but I did ask the question in regards to the glass breakwater, you know, should that break and all that? They said, we'll be able to traverse it still, it'd be harder, but we'd be able, because, you know, our ships are made to do that. He says, but your commercial ships are a different story.
Yeah.
Are a different story. And so that being said, it'd still be, it'd still be a challenge for the Navy warships and subs and all that, but imagine cutting us off commercially. I mean, we saw that in the past, I think, not necessarily, but it was typhoon-related. When Mobile had the explosion, and we got cut off. And, you know, that was bad, because, I mean, one of the next things we need to look at is, you're, you have one way in and one way out. So we need to figure that out. Maybe we can work it in with Black, Black, will you be able to do something like that? Have the alternative? But that's it, actually, that I have, and I thank you. I think, again, this is out-of-the-box type of legislation. It's highly needed, and I wanna thank, again, of course, Black Construction for, again, thinking twice about moving somewhere else, and so I hope we'll try to get this, I know our staff's gonna be working hard to try to get this, get the committee report done, to be able to get it in the May session, which happens the end of this month, we start on the 27th. So they're gonna be hard at work this weekend to try to get it out by next week. And I know we got the orders from, of course, the vice chair, the committee on rules, that he said, yeah, he have to have it by Sunday. So staff, you heard that, it has to be done by Sunday, okay?
And, Mr. Chairman, for the record, a special thank you to Senator Etta for pulling back on the other measure.
You know, Senator, it's always about working together, and I think we demonstrated that in the past and how we can come to, to come together to ensure that what we do is always for the beneficial of our people. And I think that with the bill being pulled back and moving forward, it just shows that your commitment to working with the private sector and how we can move forward. And that's always for the greater good. So thank you for, you know, coming up with a resolution to the situation, and we just continue to move forward and make progress.
Yeah, thank you, guys, and for the record, the governor's on board.
Yeah, well, thank you very much. That concludes, of course, this bill that we're hearing, this is, what bill's this? Bill 109-38. We're just gonna take a quick break to switch over so we can get our next bill, Bill 121-38-COR. Just maybe one minute recess, and then we'll come back. Okay, we're back from recess. Now we proceed to hear testimony on Bill 121. As the author, I will provide opening statements, but let's go ahead and bring up to the desk here, we have Angie Saad. Saad, is that it? Yeah, Saad? And Gina Artero. And before the start, let me just go ahead and, opening statement, okay? Thank you again, everyone, for being in attendance and for coming this morning to hear, of course, Bill Number 121-38-COR. This bill seeks to amend the Choose to Reuse Mungama Act, a plastic act of 2018, by allowing for specific practical exemptions that acknowledge the unique needs of Guam's retail industry. The heart of this bill is simple. We must recognize the critical role that our tourism and retail sectors play in sustaining our economy. The voices of our retailers have been clear and consistent. Their testimonies highlight that branded bags are not just packaging, they are part of their product's identity, and for some, a cultural expectation for our visitors and a vital piece of Guam's global image. Without these exemptions, we risk discouraging retail sales, diminishing our competitiveness, and ultimately hurting the very industries that contribute significantly to our business revenues and job creation. Implementation of this bill should be passed, should it pass, will directly support the revitalization of our tourism economy, helping Guam reclaim its place as a world-class shopping destination for international travelers while still upholding the broader environmental goals we all share. As Chairman of Tourism, I strongly encourage my colleagues to support this measure, and I look forward to today's discussions. With that, we'll now proceed to hear testimony. And we'll go ahead again and we'll start with Ms. Angie Saad. Go, please go ahead and identify again yourselves and who you represent, okay? Thank you.
Good morning, Senators.
Good morning.
My name is Angie Saad. I am the General Manager for Jemkel Corporation. We do business as Balenciaga, Chloé, Jivanchi, Marc Jacobs, and La Sport Sact in Tumon. There you go, okay. So, thank you for the opportunity to provide written testimony on behalf of Jemkel Guam. As a premier retailer with six boutiques in Tumon, Jemkel Guam has been part of the island economy for over 20 years. During this time, we have seen the highs and lows of tourism in our island economy. Unfortunately, in recent years, our economy and tourism has seen challenges from global factors that we continue to strive to recover from. The impact of the impending ban on paper bags on luxury retail industry will undeniably add to the challenges that we are already facing. Additionally, costs will need to be incurred, but more importantly, the impact of client perceptions of not only our brand, but of shopping on Guam will be negatively affected. The feeling of being able to make a luxury purchase and walk out of the boutique with a branded shopping bag is an integral part of the overall shopping experience. Luxury-brand shopping bags are high-quality, recyclable, and can be used multiple times. I've actually brought some samples of the bags that we have in the stores, and I know that previously we had provided some samples from other brands like Gucci as well, but I just wanted to highlight that you can see that the bags are very high-quality, and as a matter of fact, this Balenciaga bag has been used several times by myself to carry various things when I go shopping or to transport things back and forth. So, you can see, if you'd like, the quality is quite substantial, okay? We ask for your support in helping to maintain the luxury shopping experience in Guam by exempting luxury retail businesses from the paper bag ban. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Angie. Thank you. Gina?
Happy day and good morning, honorable members of the 38th Guam Legislature. My name is Gina Bomba Artero, and I currently serve as the General Manager for DFS Guam. Just by introduction to the DFS group, I'd like to note that DFS is majority-owned by LVMH and is a leading luxury travel retailer specializing in duty-free and duty-paid shopping. We offer a curated selection of luxury products from over 750 luxury brands. Guam, DFS Guam was established in 1971, so we're over 54 years a member of this community, and we're so proud to be serving the community for this time. We currently employ 104 staff members, which all of us are proud to offer the wide range of luxury goods to both visitors and local residents alike. I thank you for the opportunity to present my testimony in support of Bill 121-38, which proposes for a permanent exemption of the retail, for retail businesses from the paper bag ban. We deeply appreciate your willingness to collaborate on solutions to the challenges posed by the current regulations. It's important to note that the craft paper used in our shopping bags, so specifically I'm speaking for the DFS shopping bag, are made from 100% post-consumer recycled paper, which is renewable, curbside recyclable, and has a lower carbon footprint than virgin paper. We are also, they are also Forest Stewardship Council, the FSC certified, and we ensure that, which ensures that our bags are responsibly sourced, making their environmental impact minimal compared to ordinary paper bags. Additionally, these bags are made of stronger materials, just as Angie had noted as well, and making them durable for repeated use, which enhances their sustainability and practicality. Like many other retailers in Guam, our business has been adversely affected by the slow recovery of tourism and fluctuations in the Japanese yen and Korean, South Korean won. Transitioning to reusable bags represents a significant financial burden. The cost of our DFS reusable bags is more than 60% higher than that of the paper shopping bags, which we are currently deploying by DFS. This requirement places an even greater strain on our already limited resources, particularly in the face of declining revenues. We must also express our concern regarding how this transition affects several prominent luxury brands. The mandatory shift to reusable bags can undermine brand image and compliance with established selling guidelines. Notably, Guam stands as the only location globally enforcing a paper bag ban, which has led to, which has led several luxury brands who are integral to our market to hesitate producing custom reusable bags. They cite the substantial risk of these branded reusable bags being resold, which jeopardizes the integrity of their brand image. As a result, we have seen indications that several luxury brands may withdraw from the Guam market entirely due to this mandate, which is, which would significantly diminish the appeal of high-end shopping for visitors seeking luxury goods. We fully support the Bill 121-38, which allows for the exemption of the retail businesses from the paper bag ban. It will support sustainability of our businesses, strengthen Guam's retail, luxury retail sector, and bolster the overall tourism industry. This is a vital step to help us retain luxury brands and jobs in Guam. Please give us a fighting chance for our recovery. I thank you so much for your time, time even ahead of here, to hear us out, and for the efforts that you've put to introduce this bill.
Thank you, Gina. Yeah, before I ask my colleagues, let me just ask, is there a CHA bans? CHA? Okay. James? James? You're not giving testimony, but you're in support of the, you're in support of the bill? Okay. There's a Jennifer Patricio from Hilfiger?
No.
Oh, you're John? Are you John? Okay. Are you here in support of the bill as well? So, on record, you're in support of the bill? And Jennifer from Hilfiger as well was in support? Yeah, okay. And it looks like CHA bans, DKSH Guam? Oh, that's you? Well, I'm sorry, did I butcher your name?
No, I butchered you.
Okay. I'm sorry. Okay. Yeah, okay, and you're, of course, in support of the bill as well, right? Thank you very much. Okay, that being said, Senator, oh, okay, I thought Sean was here. Senator? You want to go? Okay, my co-chair, Senator Duñez.
Situs Massey, Mr. Chairman. I think it's very clear that sometimes legislation has contained in it what we call the law of unintended consequences, and I'm sure that this is one of those times. You know, obviously, the effort in the past has been to ensure, you know, environmental stewardship, but I think you've clearly demonstrated this morning that, first of all, your companies do that at the onset, and also that the use and reuse of these bags is something that is, of course, anticipated and contemplated as the bags are going to contain what they carry off as high-end luxury items. And so, that bag has a lot of value beyond just its original shopping experience. So, I know, and having met with you folks in terms of the challenging times of tourism, this really is the last thing we need right now. You know, we're trying to hold on for dear life, particularly, you know, you're in the industry of attracting, you know, high-end customers, customers that come to Guam that want to buy luxury goods and want to have a higher level of experience because of their disposable income. And we know that we welcome all visitors regardless, you know, we want everyone to come and enjoy Guam, but in particular, the last thing I think we want to do, you know, is drive away those who would come to Guam that have a higher level of disposable income and also just for your shops. I mean, you have employees, you have people who rely on your business every day for income for their families, and I just think, right now, even if it wasn't as difficult of a time as it is right now, it just, to me, seems like this, this ban on the luxury high-end, you know, bags, it really was, kind of got commingled with an effort for environmental stewardship. But I think you've made it very clear, and in my research as well, that this is not in that category and that stewardship's already contemplated. So, for that reason, Mr. Chair, I support this bill. I know there's been many that are calling for an outright, you know, repeal, maybe that's a subject for on the floor or another conversation, but I certainly think with your presentation and what we've learned, you know, as this bill's been introduced, and the reason why it was introduced also, because of many of you bringing it to our intention, that we really need to do this. As small of an effort as it may seem to help, it actually probably is much bigger than it looks on its face. So, with that, Mr. Chairman, I support this bill and hopefully we can get it to the floor for the May session. Situs Massey.
Thank you, Mr. Co-Vice Chair, Senator Duñez. Co-Vice Chair, Senator Shelley Calva.
Happy day, buenas. Thank you for your testimonies. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Okay, so, luxury bags, I don't look at it as a luxury bag. I look at this thing as a component of the merchandise. Perhaps other people may perceive that, okay, we're only, this bill has a clear, very well-defined, good intent for our, not just economic standing for Guam, but also tourism standing for Guam. So, these are carry-out bags, you know? If you divert from the fact that it's a part of a luxury brand, you would understand, especially in a business perspective, that this is a vital component of a merchandise. Now, I co-sponsored this bill, so definitely I support it, and I thank the good author of this bill for introducing it. This one has a big play because I understand that the businesses here on Guam, many are closing, and we don't want to lose more. We don't want, even, you know, in every place, there's, there are tierings of retail shops, right? There's the luxury, there's the mid, there's the lower end, but everybody has an accompanying bag, carry-out bag that you put the merchandise. So the question here is not even being a luxury, it just so happened that it's, it fell in that category, but I'm speaking on behalf, not just from the luxury part, but the middle part and even the smaller retailers that have bags. You know, I have businesses also where I printed out bags. So, when you really think about it, if you look around, it's not just luxury merchandise that has bags, even coffee shops have bags, even restaurants have bags. So you're talking about a whole denomination here or demographic here. This is something that immediately I see that we need to support, and this bill must pass immediately, because I do understand the hardships that small, medium, even large businesses are in at the moment. We need to help each other at this point in time. We need to help businesses. Bags are part of inventory. Business, businesses invest to order this simple packaging that enhances not just the merchandise, not just the product, but the experience. I'm not... I'm not going to buy something and carry it with my hand. I need a bag to carry it out, right? So on that note, I do understand that, think about it. When we order these bags, we don't order one, two, three dozen of it. We pay a lot of money for inventory. And not only that, we need to house these packaging. That means square footage that we pay out of our rent. We need to allocate square footage to house them. Because we have to order thousands to get it in an economical level, correct? So I do understand the burden that this entails, not just on a financial aspect, but also storing it, you know, stocking it up, assembling it, and everything else, the whole shebang. So on that note, I just want to say, and I just wanted to reiterate my full support on this bill. And I think it's imperative that we pass this. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Calvo. Vice Speaker, Adam.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm not his vice chair, but...
Vice Speaker.
No, but anyway, the, this is an important piece of legislation. I also understand that the timeline is coming up very quickly. And, you know, as my colleague said, Senator Duñez, you know, perhaps it's something that we really need to revisit in the bags, the bags in general, right? The, the plastic bags and things like that, the ban that was, that was placed. And sometimes the unintended consequences is what comes out of these pieces of legislation. And I think that's why we continue to look what, what works, what doesn't work, amend what doesn't work into making it beneficial to work for everyone involved. And I think Senator Calvo said it best, that, you know, those are, that's a, that's an extension of the product that you purchase. And that being, being said, you know, people look to, you know, when they buy that, that product and they get, get that bag to go with it, you know, it brings a sense of, especially in the, the high-market value items, you know, it brings a sense of, you know, yeah, exactly, yeah. It's one of those, right? And, but I think, moving forward, Mr. Chair, we, we need to really just reexamine the, the bag ban policy and see how is it that we can make it beneficial now to all the other markets out there, not just, you know, but also the grocery stores. I mean, we see a lot of these reusable bags that they call reusable. And you see it on the side of the roads now, you know, versus the biodegradable plastic bags that were here, you know? One would be left outside and it biodegrades in a matter of days, right? The biodegradable plastic. But now these reusable bags, it's harder for it to biodegrade and it takes longer. So did we actually help improve our environment? Or are we really hurting our environment even more? So that's something that we will take on for another session. But for this one, we need to really do working, work it, work on it because it's, the ban is coming up pretty quickly, right? And with that said, Mr. Chair, like I said in the last hearing, you got until Sunday to get these committee reports completed so that we can get it for our May session. So with that being said, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Speaker, regarding that. But yeah, again, you know, when this was brought to our attention, and, you know, we did research on this as well and spoke to authors of the bill that put together the ban, the bag ban. And unfortunately, this was the unintended consequence as a result. But this is coming up where bags would not be, be allowed, basically, plastic, or paper bags would not be allowed. If I'm not mistaken, you know, one of the states that's more into, again, very strict in their environmental policies, California, they have exempted bags like this as well, right? So we, we looked at that. Likewise, we spoke to folks in the industry, your bosses, basically. And we asked about, you know, Guam-specific stuff. And they had said that, you know, this is very unique for Guam and our market. As much as we want to stay here, we, this is a small market for, for companies to design bags, especially for Guam. And it would not be cost-effective. And these are brand bags, this, so if you, if you're in, in France, you'll have the same kind of bag and things. So it's, it's a brand bag, right? It's a brand bag. It's not going, it's not going to change. So again, it's an unintended consequence. And, you know, this legislature is, is committed to looking at regressive bills that may have worked in the past or maybe something that has outlived its, its, again, life, basically, and especially now during challenging times. And duty-free, thank you very much. I mean, I know the challenge you have in Saipan. I think you guys are closed in Saipan already, right? Well, we, we don't want that to happen here in Guam as well. You know, I mean, you said you had 104 employees. You used to have a lot more than that, yeah. And so that's, that's alarming. It's alarming. And again, you know, this may not be the silver bullet that will save the industry, but it may, it may be the straw that, that will bring the camels back. And we don't, we don't want this to happen. So with that being said, we got, I got the orders already from the vice speaker that, and my staff has ordered as well, that they're, they're going to be working over the weekend to get this for the, the May session. So there's no leeway, right, sir? No leeway? Yeah, man, I thought I had connection. But anyway, with that, that being said, I want to thank you, thank you for your testimony today. This will conclude this morning's public hearing on Bills 109 and 121. The committee will continue to accept written testimony on these bills, which may be addressed to myself, Senator Luhan, as chairman of the committee, and mailed to 163 West Shalan San Topa in Agate. You may also send your testimonies to senator.luhan@guamlegislature.gov. Again, this morning's public hearing is now adjourned. It is now 11:22. Again, thank you, have a great weekend, and my staff, go back to the office. We need to get to work. With that being said, thank you very much, Situs Massey. Return.